Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second item are the minutes, and there are several questions I have in here, so feel free to jump in with some of the answers here. On the first page where we refer to Mr. Deming, it says 332 Inverary Way, I believe that was Ironway.
I bet it is.
Yeah, okay. Do you see that, Trish? Okay. About third of the way down where it says Mrs. Madirtak, pronounce that please, Madirtak, asked Fred if any changes affected the approvals. I think we need to use the last name there. From, I believe it was Fromhold? Correct? Okay. Again, there was another one down, concerned about two-foot was a comprehensive plan. Two-foot what? We need to know what the two-foot is referring to there. Because if we ever go back through these things several years from now, we need to know, what are we asking here? And I quite truthfully don't remember it from last month. I believe it's referring to the two-foot grass strip possibly in there, but I think that needs to be defined properly. And again, down further, it says, is there a strong feeling about the two-foot being the corrective distance, correct distance sidewalk to street? And again, define what that is. Third page, where I question, what would happen if a car turns in and someone is parallel parked? I didn't want parallel parked, I want parallel parking if the person was in the process of parking. Again, further down, I question if 42-foot height is correct for the tower? And I think it's not a tower code, it's the zoning code. And yes, it was, would be approved by the code, but we need to refer to code there. Planning Commission questions. Where we have removing islands so the equipment can get in, are there assigned easements, west? No. East providing easements to dentist. Actually, I understand that there's going to be an easement given to the west. We were questioning whether or not an easement was given to the east, and there was, as far as I recall, not a signed easement on that, which was one of our objections. And also, I believe Delaware County Planning Commission had a question as to the same thing. Under old business MS4, let's define what MS4 is. And is Meliora right there?
Meliora Design is the actual firm.
Okay. Let's say, define MS4, and let's say what it is so we know what we're talking about. Now, do you want these redone and we'll approve next month, or do you just want to approve them with those corrections?
Actually, I have other corrections, so it would be my recommendation that I can talk to the township.
Okay, great. We'll bring it back next month?
Yeah.
For approval. Okay, then, the first item on the agenda tonight is Wheeler Field. And who is here representing?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Momoney. I'm the soil engineer for the project. The project is a simple subdivision of the Wheeler tract, and the intent is to subdivide out 2.2 acres for the Boy Scouts. Boy Scouts have been using this property. Showing with my finger for many, many years. And there's no construction that is proposed as part of this project. It's a simple transaction of one piece of ground to another.
Can you show that a little more clearly, center it on there? So, show us where the little house is now and what they're adding, or taking away from the township there.
This is the property that runs from Sol Mel Road along Darby Paoli Road. The parcel we're talking about that's being subdivided, the 2.2 acres, is this area that I'm pointing to now. And the existing structure that's there is shown as a crosshatched rectangle.
There is reference made to a barn, I believe. Where is that?
I have another plan that might help. This is a larger scale.
This might be easier to see here. Can they zoom in on that? This is zoning, this is part of a zoning application, but it gives you a better idea of the building and the property. It's the outline of the subdivided parcel. This is the building.
Thank you. That's it?
Yeah, there's a few comments which we'll clean up.
Kathy, I'll give a little bit of background just on how we got here. So, as you all know, this property was acquired by the township as part of the Ardrazen transaction. The Boy Scouts have been here for more than 50 years utilizing this space that they're attempting to purchase. When the township acquired the property, the Boy Scouts entered into negotiations with them about purchasing it from them so that they could hold fee simple title to it. As Kevin mentioned, as part of this process, there is, this is really a simple subdivision, really a lot line move. They're going to carve out the piece that they presently use. They went back and forth on how that line would ultimately be drawn. This line, or are we here? And after discussion with the township engineer, settled on this so that they could get the best utilization for the property, moving most of their use, I guess it would be, to this area of the property away from the neighbors on Lawrence Lane, and then also accommodate the township's trail extension that they're contemplating, as well as utilizing when that happens, the parking that's associated with it. So, this plan represents kind of the discussions with the township. It's a pretty basic subdivision. They're not going to knock down the building, they're going to continue their existing uses, they're not going to propose any new uses beyond what would be permitted in the ordinance, and it's, again, it's a historical use, as you'll see in Roger's letter, it's been there a long time.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board?
Is, Davis, are the uses going to increase the number of people on the site?
No, so there's no, it's going to basically remain business as usual. It's, they're there now, the use is going to stay the way it is, it's going to evolve as it has over the past 50 years, as Boy Scout uses change, but that'll all be consistent with the past 50 years of use. This will not allow for increased use to come, it'll, it'll just be what it's going to be.
Because, the reason I ask that is because if you drive by the site, you can, you drive by this old schoolhouse and you almost miss it. There's a little teeny driveway, and then you hit Lawrence Lane.
That's right.
So, if, if, it seems to me that it's a very difficult ingress egress situation right now.
Well, so it is.
So, if, are there plans to make that better, or is that going to change?
They're really, they're really aren't.
In other words, take pressure off, if there's pressure on Lawrence Lane now, if there is?
Yeah. Well, so that is where, and that's public parking, that's where cars, to the extent they park, that is where they park. And that's one of the things we talked about with the township, as you know, part of their trail expansion is to place a parking lot on the opposite side of the cabin. So, it would be further to the, I guess, northwest, further up the road.
Can you move the plan up a little? Because I notice on what the people see at home, the planning commission, the title Planning Commission is over. What, just move the, yeah, that's good. Perfect. Yes.
So, up in this area, there's going to be, one day, the township parking lot that's going to serve that trail, and we intend to use that. It's a very limited use, just in general, and the Boy Scouts use it on Saturday mornings for a few hours. It's normally a drop-off pickup scenario. This trail and the proposed parking lot will, will benefit the entire use of that property greatly. It'll allow for what I would consider to be a safer drop-off, and then there'll be a trail that'll bring them up to the cabin. But to your, to your question, this will not bring with it an expanded, more intense use. It'll just be what it's going to be, and the existing access point will remain. One of the things we were asked by the commissioners when we were contemplating this was to really keep the changes on the property to a minimum, and they were very focused on impervious coverage. So, to the extent we could keep that down, not repave to put on site parking, that was preferable. So, that's what we've done.
Is the drop-off and pickup point going to remain at the same place, and where is that?
So, basically, and I can ask one of the reps from the Boy Scouts to come up, but really, where the drop-off occurs is, they will pull in the Lawrence Lane, the scouts will get dropped off there, and they'll walk up the little piece of Darby Paoli Road.
So, they have to actually walk on the road?
That's right. Or just onto the shoulder there.
Yes.
It's pretty tight. That's my running route, but that's.
Very tight.
Yeah. So.
The ownership, is it the friends of, that's going to, the actual owner of the property?
That's correct.
And I saw that the Delaware County Planning Commission suggested some restrictions running with the deed, so that if the Boy Scouts ever do sell the property, all of these waivers that are requested will not run with the property, so they're going to be, they're going to be forever attached to the property?
That's, as long as we have ownership, we would be comfortable, obviously, if we pass the property, that those things go away.
No, they'd have to stay, all the restrictions?
Our use, right. Understood.
Okay.
It wouldn't impede our use, as I read the letter, however. Our use would be able to continue as it exists.
I think we're talking about two separate things.
The letter from the.
No, I'm talking about if sometime in the future, the Boy Scouts decide to sell this property, they own it in fee, so they can dispose of it, right?
That's correct.
Okay. But there's going to be certain waivers that are requested, and if those waivers are granted, it would be really specific to the Boy Scouts' use.
That's right.
And not somebody else's use. So, who knows what's going to happen in the future? So, if the property is sold, I know I would, and I think the other members of the commission agree with me, that you would want these restrictions, these waivers, to stay in effect so that they can't be just ignored by whoever would be buying the property.
To allow for more intense future development.
Want to put a 7-Eleven or something in there. Okay?
Right. Yep.
So, you're agreed that?
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions?
You know, David, in terms of use, the neighbor's letter talks about new activities that aren't there now, like, is there an archery range there now?
The property has, in the past, been used by everyone, for every one of the uses listed in there. Let me see, expanding our scouting traditions. Every use listed in this paragraph, sub-paragraph, has or is currently taking place on the property.
Any other questions from the board?
So, Skip, just to highlight that, I mean, I know fewer Boy Scout, I was not, so yeah, I checked out early, but it was, it kind of evolves, right? The uses kind of ebb and flow as, as kind of the scouts move through. So, maybe archery is not a primary use now, but was at one point, and to the extent it comes back. But every use here has at one point been used on the property or is presently being used, based on.
But that being said, if they once had a rifle range with 22 caliber bullets, that would be the kind of thing that I could see maybe we don't allow anymore?
Right, now, so I'm talking specifically to these uses that they've listed.
Is there some kind of limitation that in the future, there could be no additional construction? I mean, how are we?
One of the, the only thing that we talked about with the commissioners was, we wanted to put a porch on. That's what we're in front of zoning in September for, and that was part of their sale and agreement to us, was we would not do anything beyond that, or maybe an enclosed outhouse. So, we are limited to that, very limited number of square feet that we could increase the impervious coverage on the site. And that's part of our transaction with the township, and I believe is part going to be a restriction in the deed.
So, that'll be in the deed. Now, the other concern seems to be really the parking and the traffic flow. Is there any way to put some, a drop-off area or parking area that's, say, like, pavers that are grass on top? So, they're like for, for your events, so that, just to, you know, keep it green, but yet make it safe for parking if, in the case where it's not just a drop-off? Because sometimes vehicles do need to stay for an event or something. How do you handle when adults stay and the cars stay? Are they all parked on the street currently? Is there enough room on the street?
Some, some cars can come on the site and park on the grass to the extent it's not wet or muddy. But generally, if there is an extended period of stay, there's really one event, it's the June roundup that has a larger attendance. For that specific event, we engage the police, we cone the property, and we send scouts out to Lawrence Lane and the neighboring street as well, and they park the cars and facilitate smooth and safe ingress and egress. But that's really a once-a-year event, and like I said, we do engage with the Radnor Police for that event, for safety.
So, by having the larger property area available to you, you're really not, you're not expecting to have more users?
No.
Because you're not expanding the building?
That's correct.
You're not really changing the essence of the participation in what's going on?
That's exactly right.
It's just a matter of having the area to spread out a bit?
Well, it's, it's about having fee ownership of it, actually.
But it is a larger area than what you were, you were using before.
It's slightly larger, and it's kind of reoriented a little bit away from Lawrence Lane. This, it stretches more towards the northwest. Our use will, will focus now more that way, as opposed toward, more towards the back of the property.
But in the letter that we received, it mentioned some new activities, like a community garden. Is that something that?
So, there's gardening on the property now?
Okay.
That the Boy Scouts do. This is not going to be a, a community garden like you might know.
This would only be open to the scout members?
They would utilize it, that's correct.
Okay.
Fifty-five, about fifty-five.
Is that, is that pretty much the level it's been over the years? One last issue that I've thought of to ask you, the water issue. Is there running water of some kind on the property now? And from where?
So, what, what they, the scouts intend to do, once they get fee ownership, is to install a manual water pump that you would see, and that would be how they, right now there's no water in the building, they don't intend to put water in the building, it's used so infrequently, they, they see that more as a hazard than a benefit. And the only kind of bathroom facilities they've ever used is to bring in, for the June roundup, porta-potties, and that's been generally sufficient. However, with, again, ownership, they intend to enclose a porta-potty facility, so there'll be permanent bathroom facilities on the site.
For electricity in the house? Yes, okay. And you do not plan to put any real bathroom facilities in there?
No.
On there?
Is it something like we have in our parks, but smaller, like current, like, say, what we have at Ditmar? Is it that what's planned, but for a smaller scale?
They're going to, what they intend to do is basically place a porta-potty on site that would be regularly serviced, but then build a more consistent structure around the porta-potty, so that it would be more consistent with the existing building and the, and the nature of the property.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Anybody from the audience care to speak to this? If so, please come up and state your name and address? No? No comments from the audience? Okay. All right, then, is there a motion on this?
Well, I propose that, or move that we approve, recommend approval with the understanding that the, that any deed would contain all of the waivers and they, these, these restrictions would run with the deed, so that upon transference, should the property ever be sold, that the subsequent purchaser of the property would have to abide by all of the waivers and restrictions that are, that are being imposed now.
You know, I just want to throw one thought outside the box, certainly not in the application. Would the applicant and would the township consider giving the township a right of first refusal to take the property back? I mean, it was something you bought to start, it is historic.
Skip, I'm sorry, I was talking to Roger.
I said, would the township and would the applicant consider agreeing by contract to give the township a right of first refusal to purchase the property if the use stops being a Boy Scout use, or the Boy Scouts want to sell?
Checking, Skip, to see if we included that. I know we've discussed it, and there's no objection.
Has the property actually been transferred yet, Dave?
It hasn't, so it's.
Okay.
We're just the equitable owner at this point. But I know that it was signed a while ago, we have no objection to that. Again, I think we discussed it.
Well, I'm encouraging the township, whoever, Steve, to agree to that. And, you know, it may not be something you want to do today, or next week, or next 10 years, but we spent a lot of money to buy these acres in the first place, why not keep it intact?
We'll make sure that the conditions are clearly stated and that the Board of Commissioner knows the planning commission's concern about the deed restrictions for future development residential and the first right of, and the right of first refusal.
I had a question. The way you're wording, John, you're wording the, not just that you want to have the deed restrictions in there, but you, these waivers only apply for this particular applicant. So, are you trying to say that if the property changes hands, it reverts back to all the requirements?
Yes.
Is that something we can do?
Well, to get, to get technical here, the waivers are subdivision ordinance-driven, and they are subdivision particular. So, if someone comes in with a new land development or subdivision, they'd have to ask for new waivers. They're not going to get the current waivers. The fact that we granted current waivers to those subdivision approvals would not transfer automatically, that doesn't happen. Now, they're asking for, I believe it was stated, for certain variances in order to install the porch, is that correct? Those variances by law would travel with the land. And that's not something that we could attach in this, in this particular approval. It's something, the only thing that could be done is the zoning hearing board could try to attach some limitations on the grant of those variances if the applicant agreed to those, to those limitations. So, if you want to put limitations upon the grant of variants, which I believe is probably to front yard setback, then, then that could be, could be done, and that would be the recommendation I'd recommend, you recommend, that the, that the township make a request to the zoning hearing board to limit the grant of the variants concerning the front yard setback solely to the installation of the porch, and solely to the Boy Scouts of America.
Well, can't we, can't we insist on a deed restriction to prevent further subdivision or future residential development of this lot?
Yes, I wasn't addressing that.
Okay.
But yeah, that's certainly something that we could do here, and certainly the township is still owning the property, so long as the agreement of sale doesn't restrict us from doing this, you know, we certainly could do that.
Okay, well, that's the point that I was trying to get across, I probably didn't say it very well, but that's, that's, that was my primary concern. And anything else that we can attach, and I like Skip's idea that, and I, because Dave has agreed with it, that the township be accorded a right of first refusal, should the property ever go up for sale. And just so everybody knows what that means, if the property is going to be sold and there's a right of first refusal running in favor of the township, it means that the property has got to be offered to the township first before a sale can be consummated to some other purchaser.
And at the same price as the purchaser offers.
So, I agree with all of what was just discussed. How do we get that into a motion?
So, so far, I have the final motion, recommended approval with the following conditions. Deed restrictions to prevent further subdivision of the property. Deed restrictions to prevent residential construction on the property. Right of first refusal for the township.
At the same price?
At the same price. I don't know how to put Peters in on the zoning, what you would need.
And then lastly, recommend the township communicate to the zoning hearing board that any, if any waivers are granted, such waivers are limited to the construction of the request or the sought porch, as well as limited to, actually, just that, limited to, to the construction of the porch.
Okay, is there a second for that, as last stated?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is JCHAI Building, Preliminary Land Development. Could I just ask a question here? Come on up. The majority of the people in the audience, are you here for this plan or for Cabrini? For this plan, raise your hand. Okay. For Cabrini? Okay, thank you. Go ahead. May we have your name, please?
Oh, I'm Judith Creed, I'm founder and board chair of JHI. I was telling you how, JHI. I'm Stacy Levitan, and I'm the executive director of JHI.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us about this?
Oh, okay. You want to start, or do you want to start? So, let me just tell you a little bit about JHI. JHI is an organization that supports people, adults, young adults, with developmental disabilities and autism, to live and work independently. By that, we mean, we teach people literally how to live on their own, so that when they age out of school, they don't have to go home and sit with their parents and not have a life, and not learn, and not get a job, and so on. So, we started this organization about 30 years ago, when my son aged out of school and there were no programs in this area. And so, my family and a group of other families, we got together, we put an ad in the paper, 100 people showed up that wanted this. As the meetings kept going, as life goes, it ended up like 10 people. And we started an organization and a nonprofit, and we started in Wynwood with one group home with six young individuals, each having their own bedroom. We had to do, you know, zoning because it was six in a home, we, we did all that. And then the organization grew, and we had a group home in, on Beach Street in Elkins Park, and one out in the northeast. And then, as time grew, and we all learned how capable people with disabilities can be, if you teach them, we started working with apartments. And so, we were putting people in apartments in the Philadelphia and metropolitan area. We now serve over 130 people who have left their parents' homes and have jobs. Eighty percent of the people that we educate have their own jobs. And just as an FYI, in the larger society, only 20% of people with intellectual disabilities and autism have jobs. So, we're doing really well at our job and our mission. Anyway, about five years ago, our offices moved onto the Federation campus on, in Federation Hall. And we were renting it temporarily in our mind until we could find a bigger or better place than where we were. And as a matter of fact, this building, we could only use the first floor because the second floor was condemned. So, it was kind of a junker of a building in a way, but it was, it worked. It was beautiful, it's on this beautiful property, and it had all glass windows, I mean, we were very happy, but we knew that we had to do something better. And so, as time went on and we grew and we got more and more contributors, we had the idea that we would renovate. the idea that we would renovate the building and make it better. And we called in architects and civil engineers, and we found out that we'd be better off just demolishing the building and rebuilding it on the same footprint. And so we started a fundraising campaign, and now we've raised $3 million. And we're projected that the building will cost $3.4 million. So we need another... To get a maintenance fund and everything, we still are fundraising, but we have enough money to start. So we have a wonderful design by Cecil Baker and Associates. I'm sure many of you have heard of him. It's a beautiful building that is going to be on the same footprint. And how it's used is the same as we were using it, which is our offices. And then there was a bigger space where we ran classes after school, because we started a program about five years ago. We're younger people now. They were still in school. So if we had some after-school or weekend programs, we could start teaching them before they left school, how to live independently, and how to get jobs, and work on their own, and so on. And so that's how we were using the building, our offices and these afternoon programs. And that's what we continue to do, only with a gorgeous, you know, wired for all the new technology, because we run computer classes. We teach people with disabilities how to build robots and run computers, as well as cook. There's going to be a kitchen in there. So we're very excited about it. And here we are. Do you want to add anything? Well, just when you ask questions, she'll step in. Because she runs the show.
How many people do you anticipate being in this building?
Currently, our typical use of the building is really just a few of us who are there in the office permanently. Most of our program people are not in the office. They're out in the field working with our clients. When we have classes, they're really not even very big. We like to have small classes. So at any one time, I think we kind of max out around maybe 15 people in the building, most of whom are clients, and, you know, we have a few staff. So on a regular basis, we probably have three staff people in the building at any one time.
Okay. And how many of those 15 drive?
None. I just the...
So it's just the staff?
Yeah.
Okay. How many staff?
The clients don't drive at all. They either are dropped off at the building, or they take public transportation to get to us.
The reason why I'm asking is because the amount of parking that you've noted on the plan, which is less than what it would normally be for an office building.
Right. But the... Currently, we don't even use what we have, and we have nine spots. And we're projecting to add, you know, two-thirds more, six more spots. So really, we're adding more spots, but I can't conceive of a time when we would be using them. Most of the, you know, most of the people who are coming to the building are just being dropped off, and no one's parking. So it's just the staff.
All right. Thank you.
I see that you're going to take down a 10,726-square-foot building?
Yes.
Is the... Is the second floor... You said that the second floor is condemned? Is that the building you're talking about?
Presently, it is, but when we build, we're going to build a second floor.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand. How many square feet are you using now approximately? What's the first floor? Can it sit by 5,000?
A little over 5.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. The project is to demolish an existing building and reconstruct another one that's got a little bit smaller footprint. The plan I have in front of you shows the 34-acre campus of the Schwartz Campus of the Jewish Federation. Outlined in green is the area of the project. It's located behind the sports field. To the left is the Habad, and to the right is the Barak Academy. And on the other side of the stream towards the top of the plan is the American College. And way up in the far upper-left corner is a maintenance facility. So we're not involved in any of those facilities. We're focusing on the existing Federation Hall, which is shown in like a tan color inside the green circle.
And your parking would be the darker gray in front of it there?
On this plan, you can see a little bit better the building. This is the proposed building. The existing parking is in front of the proposed building. That's going to be eliminated. And a new parking lot, shown in gray alongside the sports field, is the proposed 15-car parking lot. So we're eliminating nine spaces, and we're adding 15. The building sits in exactly the same footprint, slightly smaller footprint, but exactly the same location as the existing building. And we'll include ramps that would allow for ADA access. And there's a deck on the left side that would be open to the air. That's pretty much the project. We did get review comments, and most of those comments are housekeeping-type that we'll comply with.
Yeah, I see there were several here in Roger's letter. And will you be complying with most of those requests?
There are one or two that we'd like to discuss a little bit.
Okay. Which ones?
On Roger's letter, the zoning number one, at the end of it, of the paragraphs, talks about parking.
On page two.
It's on page two at the top. Part that gives us a little bit of concern is the parking calculations must be provided for the entire site. The entire site is made up of various uses, and it would be very difficult to try to assemble the areas and the different uses and the parking obligations. And if you can remember from overall campus, that because the uses are distributed over the entire campus, that the effect of changing the number of spaces in this particular location doesn't really help any of the other facilities. Since we haven't done a study, we don't know whether there's excess parking or whether there's a demand for parking. But some of the uses, for example, the American College, if there's extra spaces there, or if there's a demand there, it's so far remote from the rest of the campus, that it wouldn't really have an impact on what we're doing in this location. The same thing generally applies to the other uses on the site. So we would ask, if it's possible, not to have to do that particular thing. We did do a plan that shows the distribution of those parking, which I'd be glad to show So we did go and count the entire number of parking spaces that are available on the campus, and there's 382 spaces. And what you see on the plan in red are circles around particular facilities, and then circled numbers shows the number of parking spaces that are available in each of those locations. So you can see the largest location of spaces is with the American College, which is on the other side of the stream, and isn't really accessible to the front part of the campus. And then the next biggest user is Barak Academy. And most of all of that happens on the east side of the building. The main entrance is in the corner, inside corner of the building, and all associated parking is in the space that I'd circle there. There's also a separate parking lot and some spaces around the Habad, which is the building furthest to the west. So that gives you a general idea of the distribution of the spaces, and how ineffective we would be if we had to add additional spaces there that wouldn't really impact any of the other uses. So we're asking for relief from doing that particular calculation.
I would say I was on the site for Shea Tree Commission. We were there about two hours, because there are a lot of beautiful trees that we wanted to look at anyway. But I didn't see anything going on around that building except what was going on inside that building. In other words, as far as I could tell, it was an island unto itself in this space, in this bigger space. And like I said, we were there for a couple hours, and I saw people come in and out of the building, but I didn't see anybody go by behind it, like on the front side. And I didn't see anybody using any of those spaces. And I think there are... It seemed like there were about six spaces now.
There's nine.
And they...
There's nine.
Or there are nine now, but maybe half were... Only half were filled, so.
Would you... I mean, from your description, is this more of a classroom use as opposed to a true office building?
Yes. It's an educational... It's an educational center and offices. So there, on the second floor, will be offices, but the first-floor space is open space for training, or we have some people across the street at Radwin Apartments. We have about 20 people with disabilities there, and they walk across to our building for social events, but it's, again, they're not drivers. And so it's a multi-use building. We have... Sometimes in the evening, we'll have a board meeting, and that's about it, other than use for... So we're teaching classes, but they're not classes like you think of classes. It's not sitting down in chairs with a teacher in front of it, because this group of people can't learn that way. So these are kind of interactive, small-group training sessions. And they don't really happen during the usual day. They don't start till after-school or early evening. And by that time, you know, the Barak School is emptied and gone. There's really very little people on the campus at that time, but it's a good time for us.
Any questions from the board so far?
Just one question is, if we're in agreement that we're satisfied with the proposed parking, how do we... Is that a zoning issue, or is that something...
I can address that.
You go.
It's an existing nonconformity on the site now. What my comment was generating was just this plan that Mr. Momoney has produced, but I haven't seen yet. I was looking for a tabulation of what parking they have, because it's an existing nonconformity. They're not making it worse. In fact, they're adding, I believe, six more parking spaces to that. So technically, they'll be making it better. But I wanted a tabulation for any future uses, if anything else was going to change in the future, to make sure that this nonconformity is maintained and not made worse.
So basically, you're satisfied with what they've provided?
As long as this plan here becomes part of the set when it gets submitted.
Okay.
And all of the items that were raised are... Will comply, except for the one that we were just discussing with the parking? Is that correct?
Pretty much yes. We'll provide the landscaping. I think that was a number of the comments. And one thing, and it's probably not the right board to talk about, was the open-space recreational requirement, since I think we've already been providing that the sports facilities are available to the township and community. Surrounding the campus already uses the site for... As a trail and for walking, walking their dogs and that kind of thing.
Number eight on page three.
Yeah.
And that can be addressed with a waiver request to the...
Yeah, I would support that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I have an ask, though. In this development, if possible, we have some challenges facing the township permit-wise for municipal separate storm sewers. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but removing sediment from paved areas is the goal of that requirement. And if there was any way for you to incorporate water quality issues that may not be required upon you during construction, but would be very inexpensive because it's a redevelopment? They're not expensive to put in when you're building, but they're... For us as a township, to go and take an existing functioning parking lot and modify it, it costs a lot more. So if you would be willing to talk with our township engineer and our consultant on how you can inexpensively incorporate some of that into your plan, because you're going to be doing work anyhow, that would be something that would help the town without really adding an additional burden on you.
Well, because we're removing the existing building, and we're providing a new parking lot, we are required to put in a stormwater management system, and the plan does show that. But we would be glad to talk to Roger about specific things that could address what your concern is.
Just because when you're doing that construction, they can be very low-cost and maybe really negligible, and help with your community as well, just to provide better water quality on the site as well. And that may be in addition to the rate controls or things that... I'm not sure which... Different parts of the township have different requirements, so I'm not sure what you're required. We don't review the stormwater on the planning commission level. Just any willingness you can...
No, we'd be glad to cooperate with that regard.
Roger, did you have any additional comments on your letter that you wanted to bring out?
No, if they're going to comply, I'm good.
Okay. Amy, on your letter?
I'm fine, too.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I do have one question, and Mr. Momoney and I discussed this today, and that was the sanitary sewer requirement, which is Roger's first comment on the letter, that planning approval is required from the sewage facilities planning module. And we did discuss that currently there are no new connections for us through RHM. So you're going to provide an analysis of the existing use, the capacity you have by virtue of the Federation building that's there versus the current and proposed need?
We did talk about that, and we are already in the process of obtaining information so that we can do an analysis to show, hopefully, that we're not increasing the amount of sewage being generated by this project, in which case then we wouldn't need to be involved with the communities that are downstream.
Okay. Thank you. Any...
I just wanted to add something so that everybody understands it better. Most of our training occurs in people's homes. That's why the building is used so little in that sense. So even though we're taking high school students after school, which is what we're doing in the building, the 130 people that we work with, we work for... We teach them in their own homes. So how to get public transportation, and how to work in their own kitchens. So I just wanted to give you a better idea about JHI, how that works. It's out in the community. So our social workers are out in the community doing the training there, just so you understand.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the audience? Yes, please. Come up and identify yourself.
My name is Bill Gregg. I'm a neighbor over on Castle Fin Lane. And I just wanted to point out that the building that's being demolished was designed by Romaldo Jergula in the early '60s. And 20 years later, he went on to design the Capitol Complex in Canberra, Australia, and has international recognition. It was a very interesting building at the time, because it was one of the first to marry contemporary architecture with an existing carriage house. But with that said, sometimes mission outweighs architectural significance. And I certainly support your mission, and I think it's a wonderful plan that you have. I'd like to move just to the broader campus as a whole, though, because there are, I think, four tenants on the campus. And I... From a neighbor's point of view, it tends to create a sort of pseudo-commercial environment on the street, on Bryn Mawr Avenue, with everybody trying to outdo one another for signage and direction. And so aesthetically, that 300, 400-yard stretch of Bryn Mawr Avenue has been cut... Has become sort of commercialized and no longer reads as an institution. One of the tenants actually has six signs out there that I would question are in compliance with zoning. I don't know that to be a fact, but I think it's something that really needs to be understood with these four different tenants there, and what it means in terms of aesthetics. Obviously, there's a school zone, and there's a 15-mile-an-hour limit during school hours, so that helps to identify that there's a school there and slow down traffic. But there just seems to be a few too many signs. I've also noticed in the last four... too many signs. I've also noticed in the last four or five months that some of the dumpsters that used to be concealed behind buildings have now moved their way out into the front yard setback. And while I haven't measured it, I believe they are noncompliant, and they certainly don't have a shielding fence around them. So I would just-
Have you contacted the township regarding that?
Well, that's what I'm-
That's on us.
Okay. Well, I'm just bringing it up, that there's this-
That's-
No, but Kathy, that's a good point, is, is maybe you want to give a little clarification on the-
Sir, sir, over here. If, if you are truly concerned about the dumpsters or any of these things, you, you can't bring it to this board because they have no control over it. But if you do call the township, ask for community development, the, that's the staff that's supposed to handle these things. So.
And I think you're right, dumpsters shouldn't be in the front yard.
All right.
But we will look at signage.
Yeah, I think that's all just part of the discussion of four tenants on a campus that typically would-
Which tenant has the six signs?
It's the school.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for the board on signage. Is there any controls over there on signs, or are they just doing their own thing?
No, there, there are sign regulations in the zoning ordinance that they have to comply with. The only question I would have is whether or not some of the signage is legally nonconforming, i.e. it precedes the enactment of these regulations. I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to talk to community development to find that out. But there are regulations that they have to comply with, yes.
Because I know on commercial buildings, office buildings and so forth, they're very limited as to signage.
Correct. And institutions like this are also. I've dealt with Kevin, with other schools in the township on limitations with signs, so I can tell you flat out, they are limited, just the same way commercial, is, you know, commercial developments are limited.
Maybe somebody needs to take a look at that. Do you have signage on this particular building? Will there be additional signage?
You know, we're working that out right now. On, we don't have a picture of it, but on the building itself says J-HI. And on the building itself will be the family, the family that gave us money to name the building, gave us a lot of money to ma, name it, and that'll be on the building. Our building is very, very setback. And what we have to discuss with Federation is whether or not there can be any signage. You can't see the building or the signage where it is now. And so we don't know if we can put any signage in the front saying, you know, J-HI that way, or whatever. So I don't know anything about that. But I know there's signage on the building. We haven't, like, gotten to that yet.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the audience on this? No? Any comments from staff? Is there any more further questions from the board? If not, is there a motion?
Let me just make sure that I understand what we're, what we're doing. My sense is that we're in agreement that the waiver of the land development process would be approved, the, and that they don't have to provide a transportation impact study. And that item eight on page three, which is section 255 dash 43.1B, small, number two in parentheses, about residential institutional subdivisions or land developments, 5,000 square feet, so on and so forth, that we're going to, I don't know how to shorthand that in terms of the lingo.
But first off, I don't think, and I, I certainly would not recommend that you recommend granting a waiver to the land development. This is, they're building a-
Okay.
A full-size classroom office building. It should go through the whole land development process. As to the other waivers, you know, I think that, those are appropriate.
Like the parking-
But I would not, I believe Roger and Amy would agree with me that this needs to go through the land development process.
Is this one that would, in your opinion, lend itself to a preliminary final?
If the plans are clean, yes.
Roger? Preliminary, the, the plan's clean enough for that?
They requested just preliminary, but I would have no objection to preliminary final.
Okay, so we're looking at waiving of the transportation impact study. The parking, is this correct?
Recommending.
There's no waiver for the parking. That's a zoning issue, and that's an existing nonconformity.
Okay. And then the waiver of section 255 dash 43?
Oh, I think they said that we couldn't waive that. That's the park land for donation?
Yeah, we can't waive, we can only make a recommendation.
Yeah, we could recommend, but we can't.
We can't waive it, I'm just saying.
Well, only the board can do that. We're just advisory.
So are we all on the same page?
Now, keep in mind, just so you understand, if you recommend preliminary final, you won't see this again.
I, I think one, it might not be setting a good precedent to go preliminary to final.
Well, I guess my question is for Roger. If everything here is will comply, what will we see differently anyway, for the further detail?
It should, it should be nothing. I mean, if everything's will comply, it'll just be a clean set of plans, and, and we'll check off the comments. But I don't, I don't see anything substantially changing at all in this plan from preliminary to final.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I mean, I don't see why, it's just a delay. I mean, to, to look at the same thing again.
Except they haven't gone to zoning yet.
Gone to zoning?
They're-
For what?
For parking?
They're, they have an existing nonconformity.
That's an existing nonconformity.
Okay, all right.
So they're pretty much ready to go, as long as they make the requested changes from Roger, and show that they're not increasing the need for a sewage permit.
What's the feel of the board? You all agree? Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, so do we have a formal recommendation, then?
All right, so I would propose that we recommend approval of a waiver from the need to provide a transportation impact study. And that approval would be conditioned upon satisfying all of the comments in Mr. Nercini's July 31st, 2017 letter or report, including the sewage comment that's on page three, item one on page three. And that this, and we would further recommend that this be treated as a preliminary final.
Yeah. Okay.
And are we, and also support of a waiver for the parks?
Oh, yes. And a waiver of the park requirement, which is on page three of Mr. Nercini's report. It's item number eight, section 255 dash 43.1, point B, number two in parentheses.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. You're approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Next two items, can we handle those together, since they're basically the same thing?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Cabrini, okay. Cabrini, five and six we'll do together, which is Cabrini's Master Plan Revision and Cabrini Land Development. And I'd first like to say that I thank you for updating your master plan. I wish more schools in this township did that when we see developments.
Good evening. I'm Howard Holden, and I'm the Capitol Projects Coordinator for Cabrini University. And with me tonight is Rob Lambert from Site Engineering, Richard King of WRT Architects, Frank Tivani of Tivani and Associates, Rob Lewis of Kaplan Stewart, John Cassiola of Aegis Property Group. And from Cabrini are Brian Yori, VP of External Affairs and Chief of Staff, and Dawn Barnett, the Director of Facilities. We're here tonight to introduce you to Phase Two of Cabrini's Master Plan. In 2013, we received final approval of our overall master plan, and in 2014, we were granted approval for Phase One of that plan, the addition of the Dixon Athletic Center. Phase Two of this plan includes many elements of the former approved plan, a 174 space parking structure for a net parking gain of 61 spaces, a new loop road, two vehicular turnaround areas. Lastly, we have added the demolition of an existing residence hall and the addition of a new residence hall, 207-bed residence hall for a gain of 187 beds. The objective of this phase are to make our campus more pedestrian-oriented and ADA compliant, to restore our student population, and bring students back on campus from off-campus housing. With the advisement of the township staff, we're here to seek your approval of this revised preliminary plan, as well as final approval of the 2017 master plan, similar to what we did in 2014. I would like to bring Richard King of WRT Architects to the podium to explain the 2017 master plan, who will then be followed by Rob Lambert.
Hi, everyone. I'm Richard King from Wallace Robertson Todd in Philadelphia. Thanks for having us here tonight. We've been coming before you for, for a number of times as, as this plan has progressed. And I'm going to walk through a little bit of what Howard mentioned earlier, just to reorient you, because there's a lot of pieces, just to give you the big picture of the plan and how it's, and how it's developed. So this is just the existing campus plan. You can see the original estate mansion here at the center with Grace Hall. Those are the two original structures on the campus. There are three entrances to the campus, on King of Prussia Road, here at the north at Upper Gulf Road, and in the southwest corner here along Eagle Road. And this, the plan is organized having all of the residential spaces along the south loop road, as it's called, with most of the academic building here in the central core, and then Athletic Center in the northwest corner. The plan that we showed you in 2012 developed quite a bit through a conversation with all of you, where we started with a very large parking structure on the south side, and that we developed through conversations with you, a more distributed parking plan. Instead of having one concentrated place, we, we distributed that between two locations, here at the north end by the athletic field, and a smaller structure here at the south end of the campus. In order to, that was in order to achieve several different things. One was to close the two, the two roads through the center of the campus to vehicular circulation, so that it could be, as Howard said, a more pedestrian-friendly campus, and increase safety on campus by reducing conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. As part of that, we also introduced turnarounds at each end of that in order for traffic to keep flowing. We also had, introduced a building here at the north end, a campus center, and a building here on the east end, which was a dining center. So those are the, the major pieces that were, were part of that plan. So let's talk a little bit about how that has evolved. We worked with all of you back in 2014 to, to develop the plan for the athletic pavilion, which has now been built, has been open for about a year, has been very well received by the campus community and by neighbors surrounding the campus that, that use the facility regularly. It seems like it's been a really great addition to the campus. And that's up here at the north end in purple. And you'll see the, the next portion of the plan, we've labeled here Phase Two in red, you'll see there's three areas on the plan.
Excuse me for one second. The folks at home, if I can't read it on this screen, and I'm a foot away, it's slightly out of focus.
Oh.
Unless you guys can read it. You can't read the phase language.
I can see it better, they're better than I can see.
Yeah.
I can, I can read through them one by one. Hopefully that will-
No, but this, the whole purpose of this being televised is that people can see this at home.
Yeah.
And what's on the screen is not working.
We can put this presentation on the website.
Okay. All right. For now, why don't you read through the phases when you get to each one?
Absolutely. So you'll see the legend here in the upper right says Phase Two. The items underneath Phase Two, the first one says new parking structure, which is lo, now located here at the east edge of the campus. The second portion is new loop road. That is a, a road that was in the previous plan, that, but we've tucked it in closer to the existing parking, so we reduced the amount of trees that would be removed. The third part of the plan are the new turnarounds. There is a turnaround here at the east side, and a turnaround here at the west side. And the west turnaround also includes some new parking to replace some of the parking that was, that was, is currently in the mansion courtyard here. And then the last part is a new residence hall, where we'll be taking out one of the existing small residence houses that's here at the southwest corner on campus, and being, and that's replaced with a new residence hall. Some of the changes that are shown here, I just wanted to walk through a couple of the reasons why they've evolved the way they have. In the previous plan, as we mentioned, there was a parking structure here in the northwest corner. There was, there were several reasons why we discussed relocating it. One was related to its location. There was concerns that it was buried quite far back in the campus. It would be difficult to find. And two, they wanted to get people out of their cars as quickly as possible, again, to reduce the amount of driving that was happening around the campus. And by having, having, folks having to drive all the way through back, up, and around, and into this structure, that was fairly convoluted, and we, we thought that was a little bit problematic for folks coming, particularly folks coming to the campus for the first time. So instead, a much smaller structure was placed here as an alternative, so that would be a little bit easier for folks when they arrive to the campus. Recalling, again, the, the structure we had at the west end was about 370 spaces. This structure is, is just under 200 spaces, so a lot smaller structure. So again, we're distributing it a little bit better. So we have smaller parking lots and more places instead of larger, larger structures. Lastly, this also allowed us to achieve a very high level of ADA accessibility for a number of buildings on campus that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to achieve. Because of the, the elevator that's in here, we're able to get folks from the, from the residence halls at this end, up and across into the core of campus, which is quite steep in that zone. So that building is allowing us to achieve that, in addition to some of the site improvements that we have here. And Rob Lambert from Site Engineering will walk through those in more detail for you. Secondly, we've relocated the loops, the, the turnarounds here, trying to make them more gracious places, so you really feel like you arrive almost like a courtyard in an old estate. So trying to really bring some sense of the original courtyard of the mansion to that arrival sequence. So, so those are a little more paved, there are trees in the center of each of them, so it really feels like the, the garden feel of the campus is maintained. And then the residence hall, as Howard described, there's a desire to bring more students back onto campus from off-campus housing. So that is a, is a, is a big achievement, we feel, and to just improve the quality of the residence halls on campus, because the competition amongst schools is very high in terms of achieving that level of quality. The third phase, Phase Three, that's shown here in blue, there are two items listed. One is the new south parking structure, which was the item that was previously on the preliminary plan that you all have seen before. And the second is the new student center at the north end of the campus, next to the existing Dixon Athletic Center, and that has remained in its position as it was before. So those are, that's the, sort of the big picture of where the changes are- So that's the sort of the big picture of where the changes are. It's a little bit easier to see here in color-coded. Once we get into some of the more detailed plans, Rob can walk through all that. But are there any questions on any of that before we go forward?
Yes. Before you hand off, the south parking structure, the one that's now 300 and some spaces, in some of the earlier iterations that we saw, or I saw, I think I'm the only one.
No, I saw it too.
You saw it too. There were connections to Eagle Road. Are those gone in this plan?
Yes. There's no connection to Eagle Road.
Other than the existing Paul Road connection?
Correct. There's a trail that heads down to Eagle Road that was, it's kind of an informal trail between the two schools, between eastern to the south, but there is no new vehicular access through that area. That was removed during the process of the conversations we had with you back in 2012 and 2013.
Are you talking about the access on Eagle Road?
No, there was, in the previous version of, early version of our plan, there was an access shown from Eagle Road, if you see, up to the Loop Road on the south end of the campus. And through conversations with all of you, you had recommended us rethinking that, and so we removed that from the plan at the time.
I'm just curious if there's anything that can be incorporated to help with the safety along Eagle Road. It's just, and where there, obviously, people do cross it. And it's such a tough road, and it's not your road, but is there anything we can maybe get, you know, some right-of-way or something to improve that? It's just such a tough sight distance-wise. It's such a tough road to see ahead of you. I mean, I'm sure you know, it's very difficult, and it doesn't feel safe. And if there was anything that, this is a fairly large development plan, if there's anything that can be somehow worked out to improve safety along that road as part of this process, I just want to plant the idea.
Sure. What I can do is, I'm going to pass the buck on that one, because the civil engineer's right behind me.
Yeah. I just want to throw it out there. I'm not saying it's part of, like, your requirements, but it's just, it's, I mean, it's, it's a difficult spot. I mean, if everyone's familiar with it.
Sure. And there's no real corner that you could create a safe passing location that's close enough that folks would be willing to walk all that way? You know, for instance, if you look at King of Prussia Road, it's a little tough, it's pretty far away.
Right. You can't pull it over to, like, a safe stopping point, but I mean, I think it's a little bit, it's, a pedestrian bridge would be overkill, because it's not your campus you're connecting with. But if there was some way to improve the safety as part of this process, I would just really hope that we can put on our thinking caps in all courts.
Any other questions?
Good evening. Rob Lambert from Site Engineering Concepts. I'm going to flip through some of the more detailed plans. There are actually two applications in front of you tonight. One is an amendment to the preliminary plan, and then one is a final plan. And so using what Richard just presented was, on this plan, so all of the phases, although one was already completed, is the amendment to the preliminary plan. And so all of those phases are shown on the preliminary plan. And that was our intent back in 2011, when we first submitted and have worked through the process, is bringing that plan forward, showing you our ideas, modifying that plan. And so that's how we propose to move forward, is amending that plan. And then what we're proposing as a final plan is just Phase Two. And so one sheet that we submitted to you is really the amendment to the preliminary plan. The larger set is actually the final plan, that has the details and the stormwater and the landscaping and all those components to it. So using this, this was the 2014 preliminary plan, and this was what was approved as part of the Dixon addition. So this piece of Dixon was constructed, and you can see that it had the student center, the north parking structure, the south parking structure, and the Loop Road included on that preliminary plan. This is the 2017 preliminary plan, and so you can see we moved the parking structure up from the upper left-hand corner to the eastern side, where Richard identified. We still have the Loop Road. We've been able to pull that in a little bit more than it was before. The student center is still shown. The Dixon Center is shown as being completed on this plan. We have the residence hall, the south parking structure, and then the pedestrianization of the core of campus. And so really, this is the first item on your agenda, was the amendment to the preliminary This is now the final land development plan, to break out the other piece. So what this drops off are the pieces that are not proposed as part of this phase. This is only showing what is proposed as part of what we're calling Phase Two of the plan. Phase One was the Dixon Center addition. This is now Phase Two, and incorporates the parking structure to the east, the turnaround, the link road, pedestrianization of campus, the western turnaround, and the residence So parking's always a question. When we went through and did the analysis back in 2011, we found that we had a nearly 1,000-space non-conformity when we went through the code. There was lots of debate at the time, but we have no parking issue on campus, and we were permitted to maintain that existing non-conformity. We intend to continue to maintain that non-conformity. And what this plan shows is where we're removing parking spaces. So the 67 is creating a pedestrian core. There's actually parking spaces in various areas throughout the core along the road. So we're actually removing all those parking spaces. We're removing some spaces up in the widener lot, this upper right-hand corner, to create the link, and then also just to create a balance to allow for the future master plan. And then we're removing these 12 spaces here, which I'll show you when we blow it up, why we're losing these parking spaces right here. We're adding 14 on the west turnaround. We have a new demand for 61 parking spaces per the code, and the parking structure has 174 spaces. So when we added all that up, we're adding 61 parking spaces to campus, but we're maintaining our existing non-conformity. So this is the area of the residence hall. You can see, the plan is actually, these are actually showing the interior, so it's each individual room. The reason we were showing this was because it worked out with the landscape plan. We used this with the Shade Tree Commission, which we did receive a recommendation from the Shade Tree Commission for both the preliminary and the final. I guess it was last week or the week before?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. So this plan shows the residence hall. It shows, right now, there's a walkway actually that runs through right where we're building and runs back up to campus. Richard started to allude to some of the ADA issues. So when we went through and really started doing analysis of campus, there are certain areas of campus where it was almost ADA but not quite. So this plan actually goes through and solves a lot of those ADA issues. So we have grading all for these walkways to create an ADA walkway back up to campus, which will go off the top of the page that goes to the western turnaround. We also have ADA parking that exists in the bottom left-hand corner, so there is actually a walkway that goes along the south side of the building that will go into an entrance. So if a student needed to park in the ADA parking spaces, they could access the building in an accessible manner. What's down below is a underground stormwater management system, so we're showing that down below. We looked at a lot of different alternatives, but this seemed to be the one that worked best, so we have a stormwater management system there. This area is the western turnaround, so on the right-hand side, you can see the piece of the mansion. This is the courtyard in the front. Since we're losing parking spaces here, this is an administrative building, so lots of people are coming and going from the building. We need to have parking in close proximity, so we've added parking spaces around this turnaround courtyard, and it also acts as an area where, you know, if somebody was getting dropped off in the core of campus, they could get dropped off here and be able to walk through campus. This is the walkway that I referenced coming up from the dorm, so this would all be accessible coming up into the core of campus. This all becomes pedestrian at this point into the existing walkway network in campus. This is looking at the parking structure on the east side. So off to the left would be the western turnaround. This existing road actually comes down and would connect. That road's going to become pedestrian. This is the eastern turnaround area, drop-off court, and then off to the right of the page is King of Prussia Road. So a user coming to the campus would come in off of King of Prussia Road, come to a four-way stop sign here, and so you could go straight to the parking structure, turn around, right up to the widener parking lots, or the athletic complex, or left down to the student residence hall area. This is the parking structure. The way it's sited here, it's actually tucked into the ground, so we're actually able to keep the height of it down. It's pushed into the ground. There's a grade change from the upper side to the lower side, and I believe it's about 15 feet, and so we're able to push that into the hillside there, really to limit the impact of the structure. We have this Loop Road. Right now, the driveway comes actually up very close to Founder's Hall, which is this building right here, and comes back around through a utility maintenance area. And so what we're able to do is put this on the outside of the building to, again, keep pedestrians, separate pedestrians and cars, is really a large goal of this, as you can see. By keeping the cars to the outside, we can keep pedestrians that are leaving the structure and walking into campus, that they don't have to cross any vehicle path. We've created a separate utility and service area that will all be screened and fenced in, because as you drive, this is going to be a thoroughfare here where people are going to be able to see, so we want to make sure we screen that area from the outside, obviously the parking structure here. One of the components of the ADA, the buildings, there's a dorm right off to the right of the page here, and although the dorm is fully accessible, you can't get up to campus. There's large grade changes. We did innumerable studies of how to create an accessible path from the dorm up to the core of campus, and it really was not practical. You wind up with a switchback that covers the entire property. What we're able to do is create a path to come up all accessibly. You would cross over the driveway and actually go up through the elevator in the building. So this building will be open 24 hours, so you will actually be able to use that elevator, come up to a higher grade, and actually be able to come across the front of Founder's and back into a campus all in an accessible manner. So that was a big achievement of the project here, to really create an accessible path. There are stormwater facilities proposed underneath this courtyard, underneath some of the walkway area, to control all the stormwater from our project. And this brings us back to the overall view. So we just went over the, on the eastern side, the parking structure area, the western turnaround, and the dorm area.
Where's the accessibility for fire equipment, ambulances?
So we're actually leaving the spine through campus, so the existing road network is going to remain open. We're going to close it from regular vehicle use, but it will be open for emergency access.
And that will reach down to the dormitory? They can?
So you have access to the rear of the dormitory. We talked about that rear access, so there's an existing road that goes right to the south of the dorm. That's the residential drive. And on the north side, there is a access, I believe it comes down to about this point on the north side.
And that has been examined by the township?
We've submitted to the township. I have a meeting scheduled, actually, with the fire marshal to go over it.
Thank you. Questions from the board at this point?
Yeah, I have a question. The residence hall that's being proposed, the required parking for that, how does that relate to what you anticipate for required parking rather than what the township requires? How about what your feeling is? Is it going to provide the parking that you need? Are you going to be shorter on parking for your own needs, not for our requirements?
I don't think we won't be short.
I mean, is it putting more of a demand on your parking than what we're requiring you to put in?
No. Actually, because the, right now, if you have a student population that are off-campus and have to drive, most of those students, each one of them has a car. From just stepping back from the code, looking at it practically, each one has a car and is going to come to campus. If you're living in a dorm, you're going to have a lesser percentage, actually, that will have a car.
So even so, you're not increasing enrollment, per se? You're requiring more students on campus?
Correct.
So those students already require a parking spot, is what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my question is, in Phase Three, do you really need all that parking to go along with your Phase Three?
Phase Three's the student center, and to meet the code, we would need the parking.
So do you need it for yourselves, I guess, is my question, not for our code?
We'd have to look at it a little more closely. We don't have a parking issue. There are empty parking spaces when we would get to Phase Three. I think we can definitely evaluate that more closely. We'll do some parking studies once the residence hall's up online, making sure that there's no issues that we don't foresee today.
But if you look at, in the school's strategic plan, it's obvious, it's clear that you're calling for enrollment to grow.
There, grow, I wouldn't say grow. I would say restore. The school's been as high, and Howard, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was 2,100 students in the early 2000s. Their goal is between 1,700 and 1,800 students. Right now, they're about 1,500, so they want to get back to a sustainable level.
I think we found from other universities that even though students live on campus, they have cars. And if the campus doesn't provide the parking, it goes in neighborhoods, which is a problem. And so I wouldn't cut back on the parking. It sounds like you have adequate parking now, but I'd be a little nervous about making it less, since you're already technically 1,000 short of what the township calculated it should be.
I'm not sure if that's a good calculation. When we haven't had a problem with parking.
Well, we're not even going there, but at this point, I would be hesitant to take it back any further. On the parking lot that's going on the right-hand side, the new parking lot there, are you going to have cars on the roof?
Yes, there will be cars on the upper level.
Because I was wondering, since it's low, if it could be a green roof, but obviously not if you have cars on it.
Yeah, you wind up, it's on every level.
Is that part of your parking structure at the bottom?
Yes. No, up top. In the middle, the one they're working on now, or going to work on. That one, right.
I have a question about the height of that. I understand it's cut into the hillside. Is that, what is the height?
I'm going to defer to Richard for that.
The height above, we have three stories above grade and a lower level. On the, what I'll say is, the highest grade is on the northwest corner, and the lowest grade is on the southeast corner. So you have basically about three and a half floors here, and you have, like, half a floor over here. So it varies quite a bit as you move around the building.
I understand. I'm just asking the highest point.
The highest point?
The northwest corner. How high is the northwest corner? Above grade?
Above grade is about five feet above grade.
The roof is five feet above grade?
He would sound each other.
Yeah.
I misunderstood. Okay.
I think we're at about 37 feet. It's probably about, what is it?
We are?
I'm sorry. Sorry, 20. I apologize. Let me just check my notes, because they're confusing the two.
And when you say highest point, is it the parking surface, or is it a parapet wall that protects the cars from?
It'd be the parking surface. It'd be the roof surface.
So the wall, how high is the wall?
The wall's usually 42 inches. Would be the legal height of the wall.
Okay. I'm still interested about the highest parking surface.
I'll have to double-check. I'm going to have to get, I apologize. I'm going to have to get back to you with the exact height.
We're looking for 38 feet, you know?
It's under, yes, it's under 38 feet. It is three floors, so the most it's probably going to be is about, is between 30 and 35 feet. I apologize, we don't have an exact height yet, because we're still trying to get the technical aspects of the garage worked out, but we know we are well within the boundary of the height of a height limit for zoning and for...
Any other questions from the board on this at the moment?
I'm looking at, I don't know who's going to answer this one, but I'm looking at the Gilmore and Associates report, July 28, 2017, page three, items 10 and 11, which goes to what Kathy asked about emergency access, and it appears you're going to be using bollards. I understand from your answer, you haven't reviewed this with the fire chief? See what I'm referring to? Page three of three?
Three of three.
Dee comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, the comments of Gilmore Associates.
We're going to coordinate exactly what, you know, is good with the fire marshal for those two areas. We want to discourage regular traffic.
Right, understood.
But enable for emergency access, it's relatively common.
My question is, you haven't dealt with this yet, is that right?
Correct. We're going to work with the fire marshal to provide one that he accepts and one that we like.
And the south parking structure as part of Phase Three, you don't have any plans or anything for that right now, except that it's going to be a parking structure?
They were submitted as part of, I didn't bring any with me this evening, but they were submitted and approved as part of the preliminary plan originally in 2012, 2013, and then again in 2014.
Okay, thanks.
And Skip, to go back to your question about building height, I believe what part of the, where Richard was trying to talk about the height, you were asking for the highest point. Way it's going to be measured from the average grade, and so the actual tabulation for the township is actually going to be much less because of that grade change. So when you look at the average grade around, I think it can be, it was the average height around the building. So it would be the average grade, and so that's actually going to change the height. But even with that, our highest point was lower.
I was just curious about the highest point, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess what we're concerned with is the visual from the neighbors. How high is that when you're looking at it from the residential area?
So...
So if you're out in the neighborhood, looking towards that garage, what's the height of the building from, say, you know, the property line there?
Yeah, we can take a look. I actually have a cross-section, let me see here.
I can't remember how the grades go in that area. Is it fairly flat between the proposed garage and the edge of the property?
Are you talking about the one on Eagle Road?
No. I'm talking about the Phase Two.
So this is, we, I'll probably hit the wrong button, so, here we go, there we go. So this was looking out at Woodcrest, which is the residential area out on the right-hand side. It's diagrammatic, we don't know the height of the house, but looking at where the house is on an aerial, where the property line is, looking at, you know, the 200-foot setback, or there's actually two different phases of setbacks. This is where the proposed loop road would be, and so you can kind of see where the grades are. This is the one piece over here, and then you can see this is the existing building in the background. So the existing building, actually, is much higher than what this structure would be. And what was the distance from the edge, 300 and...
To the property line?
To the property line.
372 feet to the house.
No, to the property, okay. Yeah, so it was about 372 feet from the edge of the structure to the property line.
But this, you're saying this is just a schematic, so how, I mean, you know just for sure that the garage is lower than the Founder's Hall, and you don't know how much lower than, you know, the rooftops, you don't, it'd be good to have like a scaled version...
This is to scale.
Oh, it is? Vertical scale?
Yeah.
So what are we talking about as far as heights go? Do we know? Like the difference between the top of Founder's Hall and the proposed parking garage?
Story and a half?
Yeah, a story and a half about. So you're looking at 15, 18 feet.
Okay. And the other question I had, you have, I'm not exactly sure what your enclosed area will contain just north of the proposed parking structure, but I was just wondering if there's any way to tuck that behind the parking structure rather than in between Founder's Hall and the parking structure? Did you look at that?
Most of that is equipment that exists.
Oh, okay, it's not all-new stuff?
No, no.
I thought it was all-new, okay.
No, it's really the equipment that exists, and we were trying not to move it because it's cost prohibitive to move.
That's understandable. So you're kind of fencing it off to make it, because right now, it's probably a little more wooded than it will be in the proposed condition. I'm guessing. I mean, that's a new road, right? The proposed loop road is new, and that's, right now, that's...
We're going to be removing some of the area, but we're actually going to be screening it, screening that area more because where it's going to be located with the road and the proximity to the road is going to be all fenced in. Right now, you really drive through it, and so you see all the pieces of equipment sitting there.
Have you met with the neighbors adjacent to the proposed parking garage?
We had a meeting last week, last week. I think there were 300 invitations sent out. We had two neighbors show up to that meeting.
Sometimes it's difficult to make these types of meetings, and depending on the time and things like that, what other means do you have to reach out and get some feedback?
We have some neighbors here. I was going to get their comments when we get to that.
Yeah, that would be great. But also, like, just to make sure that they have an opportunity, if they can't attend a meeting, to give you feedback. Do you have like a website?
Website, if you want.
Yeah.
That you want to share so that people can follow up?
Is there a website if you want?
Cabrini.edu, master plan.
If you look at Cabrini...
Cabrini.edu, master plan, okay.
...to start the master plan.
Okay. And then you have a link on there to give feedback on there?
We were waiting for this meeting to end, to load up what was good, the campus plan designs.
I mean, as far as to receive feedback, you'll have a link on there?
After bringing you down, edu...
Come on up to the microphone.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, because some people will watch this meeting after the fact, and then they'll have the information.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Urey, Chief of Staff and Vice President for General Relations. We have updated our website. It's Cabrini.edu forward slash master plan. And on that, when you access that site, there will be a direct link to email the university, and that'll go right to my inbox.
Okay.
Yeah, because Kathy, I mean, for you to say, okay, I'm a little concerned about parking in the neighborhood, if I were the neighbor, I might be saying, they never park in our neighborhood, they have tons of parking, I see it's empty all the time, I really don't want to look at a big parking garage along Eagle Road. So, you know, it's good to have, that's why it's good to have that feedback. They might support you not having to build that building if you don't feel the need to have it yourself. So it's good to have them engaged because they're living it.
Absolutely. All right. Let's go over the staff letters. Roger, you had a couple comments here that seemed basically like just cleaning up a couple of things on the Plan One and Two, handicap parking tally.
I spoke to Mr. Lambert a few days ago, and I believe he's going to comply.
Yeah, we'll comply. There was one comment that asked about a potential waiver was the vicinity plan. When I talked to Roger, I didn't think about it, but during our preliminary plan approval previously, we had gotten a waiver to just to provide the aerial for that, and we verified that with...
And I'm fine with that since there's no off-site improvements.
Okay.
And then one clarification that Mr. Nourcini brought up earlier was the sewage facilities planning. We will be submitting that. Our councils talked to township solicitor, and we would be asking for a final approval contingent upon receiving it rather than the way it's written. There are components of this plan that we do not need planning for, like a parking structure, and so we would like to go to final so we can build those improvements with or without the planning module. We are proceeding with the planning module. We're submitting that and hopefully on the list, and hopefully that issue gets resolved for the whole community. Because it's going to be a major issue.
Okay. Now, Amy, your letter. Anything in particular there that you want to draw to our attention?
I was looking a little bit into the question regarding that mid-block crossing on Eagle Road and whether it looks like it's a permitted crosswalk or not. And I could see that there was a pedestrian path leading from Cabrini's site to that crosswalk that included several sets of steps. I don't see them on the plan at all. One of our comments was to ensure that you include all pedestrian paths and trails on the plans. I have a concern with the location of that mid-block. You're encouraging students to cross at a location and putting a, having pavement markings, in fact, makes pedestrians feel more safe when they're crossing. And I'm just not sure that that's something that should be done at this location. I don't know who's maintaining the pavement markings on that crossing. I don't know if it's approved through PennDOT. I would find it unlikely that it was approved through Penn... PennDOT approved that mid-block crossing there. Okay, it doesn't meet the standards that PennDOT usually has for those? If you could show it on the plan, that would be great, so we could have dimensions on it?
With the south parking structure, when that went through preliminary, that was, that pathway was actually eliminated. As we mentioned earlier, that was never an official pathway for Cabrini. It's basically used primarily from students on the weekends going back and forth to the different campuses.
Well, are you painting the, you know, I can see some fresh paint from November of 2016 in the Google Earth image showing that you're maintaining those steps and possibly painting the railing and things. So that, to me, would encourage those students to be using that crossing. And you're telling me that you guys were eliminating it?
Well, in the original preliminary, one, the south parking structure, that pathway was eliminated. They would not, they would not be able to access the south end of the campus with that parking structure. Going forward, we would definitely, you know, we've been talking to Eastern about numerous items that we could, we can identify and work on, and that pathway could be one of those.
Okay. In the meantime, if, so you're positive that PennDOT approved it? Is that what I'm, okay. That was a nod. One of the things I would recommend is going out and trimming up the trees, not only on your side, but on the other side of the road, and doing some shrub removal if you can, just to help with the visibility of students when they're crossing at that location, just a recommendation. As far as the rest of the letter, you're looking for my opinion whether we could go for preliminary, final? Is that the discussion?
Well, this is the final plan.
The final plan on this, right.
In the Phase Two.
Yeah, if you're going to be addressing the comments that we provided in the letter...
Yes, we had, everything I saw was a will comply.
Then that would be fine.
Amy, do you have any suggestions on how to improve the safety along that road?
I just mentioned to them what they could do.
Other than, other than those, I mean, to take it a step further and actually have a safe place to cross.
All right. If you make any improvements to that crosswalk as far as adding lights or doing anything to upgrade it, you're going to have to make both sides of that ADA accessible. And I think it's going to be a difficult thing to do on Cabrini's side. There's two sets of steps. They would have to do some kind of a grading, switchback, something to get students down to reduce that grade and get handicap accessibility through that crosswalk.
Do you see a better location anywhere that would get the students from Cabrini into town?
Well, you also have to play that against whether you're going to be able to get the students to cross at that location. There must be something that's attracting them to that particular location. I don't know if the steps came first or the students were crossing, and then both campuses decided to put in the sidewalks to make it a little bit easier for them to gain access to it. So I would need some help, maybe from somebody from Cabrini.
They said it's going away.
Yeah, that path was approved, I want to say, 15 years ago by PennDOT. And it does include line-of-sight considerations, and there are state road signs on either side of the path warning that there's a pedestrian crossing ahead. So that, that's about the safest location we found. That's why we worked with PennDOT to place the path where it currently is.
And they're mentioning that they're going to be removing it when they construct the garage?
Yeah, it's also important to note that it's more of a, you know, recreational path, you know? While we do offer mixed courses with Cabrini and Eastern, those classes not being used, so during the day, it's barely used. So, yeah, but again, and I was just notified that, you know, trimming work was actually going to start next week, so we can make sure that that's on that to-do list.
Okay.
So Amy, you're basically...
I'm satisfied with that, yes.
Okay. And Steve?
I'm fine, thank you. Your comment.
Any questions from the board further?
Public.
Okay. The public? Yes, please, come on up. And may we have your name?
My name is Franklin Brown. We live at 726 Woodcrest Road, virtually back of where this new parking garage is going to be, and I had some questions. First of all, this is a wonderful wooded area, and I don't know how the Shade Tree Commission will feel about taking down a heck of a lot of trees to put in this parking garage. I'm also concerned about the building height. It was mentioned that the building height is not going to be much different from the other buildings on campus. However, this is considerably higher than the nearby buildings on campus. So a four-story building there is going to be very visible from the neighbors on both sides of the street. As far as the rooftop parking and open parking, I believe, I think the headlights at night on an open parking garage are going to be very disturbing to the neighbors on both sides of Woodcrest Road. I don't know what kind of screening is proposed between this parking garage and the neighbors. It's mentioned in the little pictures of trees on there that it's going to be screened, but I'm very concerned about the amount of screening and how far back the screening is going to be and how invasive it's going to be on our properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Would somebody from Cabrini like to address that?
So we do have Shade Tree, a recommendation from Shade Tree for approval. The height of the structure...
Could we go back to one of the diagrams you showed, showed trees?
Yep.
Now, the light green representation of trees, they're currently there?
So the light green on the perimeter are existing trees out here. The smaller trees here are infill, so these are all proposed. And as they pointed out, yeah, evergreen trees, I'm sorry, are the smaller areas here. So what was pointed out is this is a wooded area, and so one of the things is trying to get additional trees to grow and supplement it. And so we've looked at taking pockets where there might be a hole or an area that we can plant trees and find those areas, plant them. And so you have this perimeter area of existing trees. We're going to supplement that with additional trees. We're going to have an LA of trees along this drive, and then we have another set of trees closer to the building. So there's really several layers of landscape that we're looking at screening.
Now, the trees that the gentleman was talking about are, that would be removed, do they encroach into the area where the parking structure is going?
Yes, there's an area, this area in here, there are substantial amount of trees in this area.
Okay.
The, there was a question about height. So this building next to us is Founder's. It actually sits, starts off at a much higher grade or elevation than what our parking structure is. I want to, and this is just thinking about different numbers, I think it's about a 12 to 15-foot difference between this area and this area up here. So already, we're pushing that structure down. As the previous cross-section showed, you could see where this is 15, 18 feet shorter than the adjacent building. So although the buildings might be both three stories, this building starts off much higher and is a much taller building where this is seated at a much lower area. We've thought about headlights. We've actually looked at that. So from a grade standpoint, for proximity is, there's an existing parking lot up to the upper left, and the upper level of this is actually lower than this parking. So this parking up in this area is actually at a higher grade, or a lot of it's at a higher grade than our top level or our parking structure. And if you start looking at sightlines, so if you have cars facing east, they're really shining a far way. Facing north, you know, you have a large area of landscape in between where the structure would be and any adjacent residents up to the, up to the north. So really, you're looking a long way east and a long way north for any area. You do have a perimeter wall to block that headlight, but I also understand there is some reflection. some reflected light and things like that in the distance, and existing landscape really shield that extra light.
Could we go back to the cross-section you had earlier?
Yes.
Now, those trees that you show there, the evergreen trees, they're currently there?
A lot of the trees in this area are more deciduous. I don't know if the species of trees were, yeah, you can.
So, it's really difficult to find trees for a drawing like this that are tall because it's a very mature wooded area, and so there's actually not a lot of low branches. It's actually quite tall. So you see mostly trunks. So you get a lot of tulip poplars and things like that. So most of the branches are a pie, and so most of the leaves are a pie. So there is ground cover, and there are rhododendrons, et cetera, that are in the, that are below. One of the things that I think is important about the plan that we were looking at before, as we were thinking through a strategy for how we might provide an appropriate screen between the neighbors and the site, one was an appreciation of the fact that right now these neighbors have a lovely wooded view, and we didn't want to disturb that wooded view as much as possible. And so we tried to make sure that the screening that we create that's required around the parking structure is as close to the structure as we can get it, so that we preserve the depth of their view as much as possible, so that a feeling of still being in the woods when they're in their backyards is preserved to the greatest extent possible. So, for instance, we said we're 372 feet from the property line to where the corner of the closest structure would be. So we're about, say, 300 feet away from their property line before we start the screen. So there's about a football field of woods that are maintained between the property line and where we begin the screening. So again, we've tried to maintain that distance as much as possible.
All right, thank you. Any other, yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, my name's Tom. My name is Tom Rogers. I live at 712 Woodcrest Circle. And I have a question. I don't know. Trying to figure out how to work this. All right. I'll get it. That's the parking garage, correct? Okay. You didn't answer your question, how many trees have been taken down that exist right here? That works the point of it, the whole point of this exercise is you take these neighbors that exist up in this area up in here, the headlights off the top of this garage are going to be shining right in because you've eliminated all these trees. And the trees that you tend to put in probably are not as high, whoops, as that parking structure. Can you get that back for me, please? They're not as high as this parking structure or the trees that are being removed. So they will have headlights that will be shining into this general area here. So I don't see how their plan to prevent the headlights from shining will evolve within the next 10 or 15 years, but the trees won't grow as high to cover the top of that roof. Am I right or am I wrong?
Do you want to answer that?
So we're removing 118 trees. That includes the area down to the south, and so that includes this area, basically this whole area in here, but the area down to the south, so that include that area.
And those trees you're removing, are they deciduous or evergreen?
Predominantly deciduous.
Okay, so in the winter, there's no leaves.
Right. And so then, I'm going to go back to that cross-section. And I'm just skipping over the whole plan set so we don't have to flip through every sheet. So one thing that I didn't point out in the last time we had this up was, you can see the, you know, the starting of that parapet wall, and that's what I was talking about, is screening the lights kind of from an immediate standpoint. True, the tree that we're going to plant right here, at the time of planting, is not going to cover that area, but it will grow taller. And then the grades and the existing trees do, and distance, will diffuse that, any light off of that.
The representative house that you show over there, about how tall would that be?
I'll defer to Richard since they prepared it there.
The houses along, most of the houses on Woodcrest are two-story homes, so they're probably to the, you know, if you're in the upstairs looking out, you're probably, say, 15 feet, 15 to 20 feet off the ground.
Okay. Now, the diagram house that you have there, is that representative of a two-story house?
It's not quite, actually. It's not quite, it's a, we probably cut it just through a spot that was a one-story piece for a two-story house. We're happy to adjust that if needed.
Okay.
One of the other things that we've been working on detail-wise, I'm just going to jump to a different drawing just to give you. So in the plan here, you can, you can see the, faintly, the parking spaces along the edge, just jump to, just, of the, of the structure. We're looking at different scenarios now to try and move those parking spots so that there wouldn't be actually any parking spots on this edge, and it would just be traffic moving in a north-south direction. Our thought was if we did that, we'd be able to reduce by quite a lot how much direct light would be thrown in that direction and try and minimize that as much as possible. Also, we're happy, we would look in detail, the guardrail is required to be 42 inches high, which is higher than your typical headlights on a car, but if it needed to be a little bit higher, that's certainly something we could look at to see how much we could really mitigate that as much as possible. And we're, we haven't designed the garage in detail yet, so we could also look at screening, et cetera, on the facade that might further reduce that light transfer out into the woods.
That sounds like it might be a good idea. Any more questions from the board, audience? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name's Kathy Reinhardt, and we live at 180 Berwin Circle. We're not really impacted that much by Phase Two. My neighbors are more so impacted by Phase Two, and I am concerned about the headlights.
Okay, could you get a little closer to the mic? Thanks.
I am concerned about the headlight issue. I'm also concerned about the removal of all the trees. Our experience, and we have a great relationship with Cabrini, of our experiences, they're horrendous at maintaining landscaping. Promises are made and promises have not been kept. They're not very good at planting trees when they say they will, they're not very good at maintaining the trees. If trees start to decay, it takes them a long time. So that's, you know, that's sort of just speaking to the landscaping that they're talking about doing. And when I hear cross, certain things are cost prohibitive, it also concerns me because maintaining landscaping and planting trees is an expense, and I'm not sure how that fits into the master plan. I will say, we live directly across from the Dixon Center, and that's not shown on here. So in Phase Three, I am concerned about that parking garage. It's not really clear to me where that, it looks like it crosses the existing road into a field that's directly behind our house, but we routinely have headlights in our house every night because Cabrini has not planted trees. And this is just ground level, not, you know, a two-story or three-story structure. I'm not sure what it was, I think it was a three-story structure.
Thank you.
Those are my concerns.
I think I can address the question about the Phase Three. So this, the parking structure that was previously on the preliminary plan that was on the north side is relocated here, so there is no other north parking structure proposed.
What's proposed in Phase Three in the, is it another building? Student Center, right?
It's a campus center, correct.
So north of there?
So this was the proposed student center.
Okay, so that's just, so the only additional parking is in Phase Two and then at the south side in Phase Three?
In Phase Three, correct.
Under Phase Three, what are those two green bullets? What's the first one?
That's the top?
It was the new, it was the new South parking structure.
Okay.
And then, and then the student center.
Any, yes, would you like to come up, please? No, we need you up here at the mic. So people in TV land can hear you.
I'm Joyce Brown, and I live on Woodcrest Road. Forty-seven years, my husband and I have been there, and we all do very well. We are concerned about the trees too because of the sound that is so strong with the, can you hear me? With the children coming up and down the driveway, and we're right on the driveway. We need the trees to muffle the sound. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Also, we need the trees because every morning at 6 o'clock, we hear the trash trucks coming up, and that's the way we wake up in the morning. That muffles the sound too if we have trees. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think that's a very good point to bring up because we've had several plans where, it's not Cabrini, but it's someone else who's made promises to put buffers in, and more often than not, I think we're hearing back that the buffers didn't deliver. And I don't know that Radnor Township has a mechanism in place to ensure that those buffers do deliver what they promise. And we've had several neighbors come back and say that developer told them what they were going to do, and in the end, it's not what happened. And if you think about that townhouse development, that was one of the ones recently, people were very supportive because of what they saw on a plan, and then what they actually got in the real world was very different. So I have concerns about the, how do we guarantee that what's on the plan is what's?
That would be enforcement by the township.
If I may address that back in gentleman.
How does that get held?
So Regina, based on the approved plan, when that plan is approved, our inspectors go out and they do review this. And in the case of a buffer that's required by zoning or that went through Shade Tree like this did, we usually send John Hoss back out, and he's the township's appointed arbors. So I think the situation you were referring to with the townhouses, there were large trees that were required to remain, and the contractor damaged them and they had to be removed. But he paid a $60,000 fine to the Shade Tree Fund for doing that, and also had to replace them with massive trees that were planted with tree spades. So probably the biggest thing is, it's not making sure, the concern shouldn't be making sure what's on the plan is installed because we do that, that's what our inspectors do. It's the maintenance of any required buffer, that's, that's the issue, to make sure that, because a zoning buffer, they have to maintain in perpetuity if it's required by zoning or any of these buffers. I think, so I think that's the concern. I also think I want to just touch on what Mr. Lambert said. So that cross-section was, if you look at that, so the trees they're planting now, the buffer on the LA, that's going to occur as time goes on because they're, and I'll defer to Mr. Holden, two and a half, three and a half inch caliber trees, they're deciduous, they're not huge now when they go in, they will drop their leaves, and as time goes on, that beautiful canopy will come about and that shit, and that, that visual buffer will. But, so to Regina's point, we'll make sure on the inspection and engineering side that the correct trees and everything are planted. It's, it's that continual follow-up. And honestly, we, we request help from the neighbors. If you see work going on in something like this, you should give us a call, and we'll go out and we will check it out. And if something that was required to be planted was removed, we'll make sure it gets replanted. Because things, 10 years from now is a whole different story than this meeting.
Yes, please.
I have a question about the landscaping plan. If possible, can there be a maintenance, not a maintenance, an establishment period defined where the, you know, care of those planted trees would not be Cabrini's responsibility, but someone who has experience with establishing plants?
There essentially already is with respect to any required plantings for a land development plan. There'll be an inspection done at the initial time the planting is done. When the applicant goes to close out the project, which would be the release of all their financial security that's established with the township, there's an inspection done at that point to make sure that you have complied with the entire planting process. At that time, there is a maintenance bond that has to be posted for certain public or quasi-public improvements guaranteeing that those public improvements remain intact for a period of time. It's a maintenance bond. Covered in that maintenance bond are required plantings, so it's not just road improvements that might be out there. So there's an 18-month maintenance bond that gets posted at that time to guarantee that those trees are still alive for 18 months, that they're functioning as they're supposed to. So another inspection is then done 18 months after construction is completed to ensure that those trees are remaining and those buffer plantings are. And only at that time would that maintenance bond then be released by the township back to the applicant. So there is that follow-up inspection, and I think what was being referred to is, after that 18 months, yes, you know, you're going to have to have, it's difficult for the township to come out constantly and continue to inspect those, so the applicant has to upkeep the plantings, and then neighbors, if their buffer goes or they see dying and dead trees, would have to bring it to the township's attention.
And which department should they go to?
If, yeah, it'll all come through engineering.
Engineering, okay.
During that, during construction, during the 18th month maintenance period and in perpetuity, they see that.
Great, thank you.
So just to talk a little bit more.
Sorry.
That's all right. Talk a little bit about, in terms of what we've laid out so far, how, so far what we've responded to those kinds of issues. So one of the challenges about that edge of the campus is, for instance, if we were to try to put a screen closer to the property line, you're a football field away from water and utilities, and so it's really difficult to keep those plants alive. So by pushing them also close to the garage as possible and not in the woods, they'll get the sunlight they need, they'll get the water they need, we can irrigate those plants. We're also using all native species, so their chance of survival is much higher in a climate if they go without water for a period of time. So we're trying to set up the scenario in terms of how we've laid out so far so that it increases the chance that those plants will survive and makes it as simple as possible for them to be maintained and that that screen can grow to, and fill out over time.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Comments? No?
I guess the only other comment I would have is the lower that elevation of that top of the garage is, the less of an impact is it? Is there any way to dig it in any further and say, you know, your entrance where it is, push it back to where it's a little lower at that circle and just make the whole footprint go down at all? I mean, it's just, just imagine yourself in one of those houses, you know? You'd probably all be looking to shrink it.
All of your, all of your questions, I think we've talked about now for a while. So the, and when I say that, I mean internally, we've been talking about it for months. We want to push this down as much as possible too. So it's a, you know, we have a mutual interest, you know, the neighbors want it and we want it, so we've really tried to push it down. The location of this driveway actually was pushing it down as much as possible. We originally had the driveway up in the circle because it kind of made a little bit more flow sense to have it in the circle at one point when we were talking about it. But what that does is that actually raised it, I think, four or five feet when we were looking at that, just to get the grades of the circle. So moving it down here, we were able to lower it and keep that lowest entry as low as possible, which then pulls down the upper part of the structure.
And Regina, I think they heard us about the lights, and they're going to look at engineering things to maybe raise the parapet wall or put a screening on the wall that faces the neighbors on top of the parapet wall. That's what I heard.
Yeah, I mean, there's innovative ways, it's just a matter of maintenance then, you know, some people put green, greenery on the, you know, but those are commercial buildings in cities that have, you know, revenue. So, I mean, I'm not looking to expect something that can't be supported, but anything that could be done, I mean, to help make that, to minimize, obviously. I know you're all thinking in those directions as well.
I think also, one of the things to remember too is that this is the front door to the campus. So the main, the main drive into the campus is So the main drive into the campus is right down through this cathedral of trees. So what that facade looks like is incredibly important, that it's scaled appropriately, that we reduce its scale as much as possible and that we don't want people coming into the campus and seeing cars and seeing headlights. So I think it's both in Cabrini's and the neighbors' interest, shared interest, to make that garage be as un-garaged as possible, but we agree.
So at this point, you can't really show us renderings because you haven't gotten there yet?
Correct. We felt that, right now, we're doing pricing, all construction cost pricing and all of this, and we were uncomfortable showing you something if we weren't going to be able to afford it. And so that's why we're testing the cost to see where we can come in in terms of committing to what that's going to look like at this exact moment.
Well, that sounds reasonable. I don't know where we are in the process. Are we looking, what are we looking to do tonight? Because I feel like there's a lot of details out there.
Well, I can summarize the process for you.
Sure.
There are two things before you tonight. There is the update of the preliminary master plan, which is one motion that you need to make for that. And then separate from that is a recommendation on what would be the Phase Two final land development plan.
So the difference between the preliminary plan that we looked at earlier and the preliminary plan of today, can someone just recap that?
Well, I'll, you want to take a crack at that, Rob?
What's the major points that are, you know, have shifted?
Well, again, there is the update of the preliminary master plan, which is what you see on the screen in front of you here. That's one vote that we need for tonight, one recommendation. And second, the other item is the final land development plan for the Phase Two improvements.
I thought we'd handle those two separately.
Sure.
They must be handled separately.
But the question I have is, are people ready to make a recommendation on the final plan without those details?
Well, let's see. We'll see what thoughts of the board.
I mean, does anyone want to discuss that? Does anyone feel like they need further details to recommend for final approval?
I do. I understand the concept, I understand what I want to do, but I mean, it's a little too amorphous right now for me to really get on board.
Why don't we separate out the preliminary land development plan, which was the update of your plan, correct?
Yes.
The master plan.
Preliminary master plan. Can you just recap the major change?
Yep. Why don't I just go right to that sheet? All right, so this is the 2014, so this is the existing master plan that's in place. Southern structure, the loop road, northern structure, student center, Dixon that was completed, and the improvements around that area. They proposed move the northern structure to the east side that we're talking about now and add it in the residence hall. So those were the two big changes to that plan. There's a bunch of little changes with, you know, changing the way the circles are and different things, but those were the two major pieces of that that changed. Now, one thing I did want to say about, a question about the aesthetics of it is, we do have to go to design review board still. So that was another layer of the approval process that we still have to go through after we go through this process.
So is the board comfortable with making a decision tonight on number five, the master plan?
I guess the merits of the move of the garage was that it is getting further away from the residence.
And also that they're putting parking, they're putting parking in, more in the center there, so it will make accessibility better for handicapped people. Remember, they have the elevator in there and to, I think it's smart to have some parking in the center there because it's a long walk if you have problems walking to some of the central buildings.
I guess the thing that would make me feel more comfortable is if we had more detail on that location there because that's where the main concern is from residents. As far as, you know, the facade, the actual, I'm still like, I feel like that's a sketch.
But this is a master plan. It's where things are going.
Right, but once you say yes to that garage location, at that point, all the other details don't make any difference.
Regina, if I can correct you there, this is just a preliminary master plan. The second phase is the final land development plan where you're considering what's actually being placed in there.
Sure, but this is the cons, I mean, I don't even know, what does the, does it have any?
I think they'll know that didn't even give us one.
Real weight, does a master plan have any?
Yes, it gives you direction on what's going to happen in the future. And when they decide to move to Phase Three, then that becomes the final land development for the project. And that's when you work out the ADA requirements, pathways, and the particulars about the site. So right now, you're looking at it to approve campus-wide what they're proposing and they're only working on Phase Two at this time for final.
Back in 2011, was it the first crack at this?
Our first mission was 2011.
The, this board and the Board of Commissioners asked them to prepare a master plan of the campus and then follow that and follow this procedure every time they come in to update that in order to do the next step of the land development, knowing that they weren't going to implement a land development campus-wide all at one time.
Plus, I think things change.
Sure.
As, you know, so you really can't set it in stone and expect it not to change if they find a better way of doing it.
Sure, but I guess with this plan, there's the negative to the adjacent neighbors there because of the removal of the trees, the relocating of the parking.
I think there'd probably be a negative if it were on the other side too.
Were there any complaints to the old location? I don't really recall.
You know, I don't remember, actually.
I don't really remember hearing any, but, to the old location? No.
Well, the original location, we had, our original location actually was all, moving all the structures to the south side and we had a long time.
The previously approved site of the parking.
And I think I might have been one of the ones that said, I think parking's too far away from other parts of the campus.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly if we had, but looking at it became a distance issue, removing all the parking from the core, it really became apparent that this location made a lot of sense just from a parking demand perspective of where the parking's demanded the most, where patrons are coming in, coming in the driveway, right into the structure, being able to park and create a pedestrian experience. I've not shown all of the detailed plans. We've submitted them all, they've all been reviewed. I'd be happy to go through all the detailed plans if you'd like to, but we have all those where we'll comply with the township review letters as we move forward. So we have all the elevations, we have the grading, we have stormwater designs, we have all those components that we've submitted and I have them all here if you want to go through them, but.
Well, I think right now, I'm going to call for a vote, one way or other, on number five, the decision on the master plan revision, preliminary land development plan. Is there, yes? Yep, one up to Mike.
Now, I'm understanding, I'm understanding a little more about what's going on. So that original structure is behind the Dixon Center, is that correct? The original proposed, that little rectangle in the upper left, it's being now moved down adjacent to Woodcrest?
It was over the existing parking lot. It was going to be to the west of the proposed student center.
Okay. So I will say, I'd be surprised that there were any neighbors who complained about that location because there are no neighbors back there.
Okay.
That is Valley Forge Military Academy.
Okay.
Okay? So basically, and my comment, and I understand you're going to vote, my comment is Cabrini is doing what's most desirable for them, which I understand their business perspective, and making it the least desirable solution for neighbors on Woodcrest Road. That's my perspective.
Okay.
And I don't know if I've talked to neighbors about that. So I don't understand why it was moved. I understand what you've talked about and it sounds like those are all practical reasons, has nothing to do with benefiting the neighborhood. So it's basically taking Cabrini and making it a nicer place and making the neighborhood not as desirable, is the comment I will make as a neighbor.
All right, thank you.
To Cabrini. And since we're not discussing Phase Three, I won't make any, but I also wanted to make the comment that it's a little disingenuous. I heard on the TV broadcast that Cabrini made the comment that they sent out 300 invitations. They have perennially invited neighbors in the middle of the summer when people are at summer houses and on vacation, the end of July, every time. It's really tough for people with families and other neighbors to attend a meeting at that point of the summer.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry to add this at this late point, but on the parking garage, so everybody's been concerned with the top level and the parapet wall. So on the lower two levels, which are exposed in that one cross-section, Mr. Lambert had up, what is in there architecturally to stop, because that concerns me more, you have a deciduous forest with tree trunks and on those lower levels, if you could pull up the cross-section, that diagram?
It'll be a very similar treatment that's on the upper level because you still have the same 42-inch requirement there.
So what's in the gap between the 42 inches and the ceiling? Not that the 42 inches might not work, but when a car's coming up a ramp or down a ramp, that's when those things occur. The 42 inches is great for pulling into a parking spot, but it's getting there depending on the grades. So Mr. Lambert, where it says proposed parking structure, so those two, say the middle floor, that's what concerns me the most because the trees are not necessarily a true accurate depiction of what's there. And I'm looking at that house and if I draw a straight line across, roughly speaking, it's hard to tell, I think I'm in the bedroom window.
Well, this highlights one of the concerns, I think, is that we don't have enough detail because there could be screening put in there, there could be other things done, but we don't have, we're approving something here with the clear indication from the neighbors that they already have some evidence that it's annoying to them. And that shouldn't be. That's the bottom line.
I concur.
To be a good neighbor, you really can't be doing that. So I think we need more detail. We need to know more about what this garage is going to be all about and what it's going to look like and what you're going to do to make sure that it's at least, at least amount of intrusiveness on these neighbors who have been living there in those houses for quite some time.
It strikes me that from an elevation look, we could make a better judgment at times on this. The other thing is, I know you need natural light in the garage, but maybe you don't need natural light at all on that wall. Maybe it just could be.
The exterior sides, both exteriors.
You could design something into the masonry or stonework or, you know, very small windows that are not even windows. Sometimes you see dormers on new homes that no light comes out because they're fake. I mean, you could do something to make the facade look good and just screen all light from that whole side, if that's a concern of the neighbors.
I think those are all fair points and those are things that we can definitely look at, what drives. The unfortunate thing about parking structures is that the regulations about parking structures are very severe. So what we can do with the opening in a parking structure is really challenging because it's about fresh air. It's more about fresh air than light, actually, and making sure that carbon monoxide doesn't build up inside the structure. So it's, there are calculations we actually have to do for the facades in order to maximize the amount of airflow. So we're looking at that and we are going to have some strategies for how to do that. We're still doing that in detail, but we do not have them ready yet, as you stated.
I'm not an engineer, but I'm just thinking of creative solutions, like if you had a lower wall and an upper wall or like this, there's an air gap, but there's still no light coming through. That's, you take a little space out of the structure, that's all.
Right.
Maybe.
Those are good suggestions.
All right, on number five, what do we want to do tonight?
I mean, if we're calling a vote to recommend, I'm not in support of that.
I agree.
What's this side say? We have three choices, approve, deny, or continue.
I think if they're willing to continue to work to make the neighbors, make it viable for the neighbors, I'd be in favor of continuance. However, otherwise, I'd recommend denial and keep it where it was.
Continue before I deny.
Okay. How does the applicant feel about continuing? And then next month, come back with more detail.
Sure, and I think this goes back to the fact that we do have two applications in front of you at this time. And I think what I hear is that you're asking for a motion simply on the master plan revision.
Well, actually, I was working towards both. I thought the master would be easier, it wasn't.
I agree. I'm a little bit surprised, I guess, that the master plan is that much of a troublesome spot. The master plan is vision planning. And what gets into the details that I hear, a lot of people asking for more details and asking about how we can modify the parking structure or how we can improve the aesthetics and improve the ability to minimize intrusion of headlights, that's relevant to a final plan submission, which is the next motion. So we certainly believe it's appropriate that the planning commission take action on the master plan. This is merely an update, us providing additional information on the grand plan for Cabrini University and, again, dramatically improving the overall pedestrian connectivity of the site and addressing all the concerns that have always been a part of the master plan. So that's the one element.
I don't think that, I think you're misreading us. You haven't changed the core that much. The turnarounds are, nobody here is complaining about the turnarounds. It's basically the garage moved from the Valley Forge Military Academy side to the main entrance. That's the whole nub of it. We approved a preliminary plan years ago and now you want us to change the preliminary master plan. And one of the sticking points is Phase Two of that master plan, not Phase Three. Everybody's happier, well, not perfectly happy, but everybody's happier that the garage on Eagle is smaller. But what, I think nobody is as happy about the fact that that main 174 garage moved across campus from the last preliminary plan. So I think if we're going to approve that, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think if we're going to approve that, we sort of want to see what the garage can turn into or turn down from. And that's why we're reluctant to approve both things at once.
I think we can agree to continue. One of the things I wanted to clarify was, when we resubmit, instead of resubmitting, what is it, 30 sets of 26 sheets or whatever we had to do, if we can save a tree or two and really focus on your questions tonight to resubmit, you know, I think we've worked with the engineers to come up and are basically, will comply with their letters. What I'd like to do is be able to resubmit really the information you're looking for as far as elevations, screening, cross-sections, those pieces, but not the whole set. I'm happy to resubmit it, but I just.
Yeah, I don't think what we're looking for is a new plan set. I think what we're looking for is a stronger effort to coordinate with the neighbors and I know you didn't have good turnout for what you asked, but that's, I'm not satisfied with two people giving you feedback.
And how you can minimize the problems that the neighbors feel they will have.
Yeah, and I think we can do that.
Also, I think what would help would be Shade Tree Commission did a site visit and this was two weeks ago, about two and a half weeks ago. So our impression, our overall overriding impression of what was going to happen to the roads to the east of the garage and to residents, it was, it's almost overly wooded right now. So there's a huge screen right now. They're having a hard time actually getting replacement trees in because they have so many trees to begin with. If there's some way you guys can show that to this commission, I think it will alleviate some of the concerns tonight that people who probably haven't been to the site, haven't seen how overly wooded the site is. So it's like, from the Shade Tree perspective, we felt like this, that Cabrini was actually going further than they had to go because they were looking for spots to put trees in to create more screen because they have so much screen already. So if there's some way that you guys can show that.
We'll do our best.
That would be, I think, very helpful to your cause because, or we should, you guys should go and look at the site yourselves.
Yeah, I've been on the property several times. It's a little hard to envision the change because this is really the first time I'm looking at it, so I would have to go on the site and look at it as well. However, it's not, it's not my buy-in that I'm looking for, I'm looking for the neighbors' buy-in, honestly, because it's feasible to keep it where it was before and we don't have to disappoint any, I mean, these people live there, so.
This is, just to be clear, this is, we have a, is this subject to the 125 or is this subject to the 125 or the 200 setback? 200, right. So we have a 200-foot required setback and we're 372 feet, so we're almost double your required setback for this. And so as saying, you know, we are complying with your codes, we are complying with all those things. those things, I'm not saying we're not coming back, I'm not saying that we're not going to work with the neighbors, but I want to be clear that this is a, you know, a, a plan that meets your code. It actually is almost double your code.
Sure, but when we approved it initially as a concept, it was different, significantly different as an impact to Radnor Township residents, and we're here for Radnor Township residents. We're not here for the code, we're not here for.
You are here for the code at some point.
Roger's here for the code, we've got Roger for that. And, you know, and if it's all will comply and et cetera, et cetera, I understand, but it's, it's still not there yet for the buy-in for the neighbors. And if you can achieve that, then it's a win-win for everyone.
No problem. Thank you.
So we fully understand what we're primarily, primarily looking for is what the exterior of this building will look like and what they're going to do to minimize any light on this, coming off of the parking lot. Is that the main?
And also, any other creative things that they come up with? For example, perhaps it could be lowered even more, or the parapet roll can be raised. I mean, there's a whole panel play of things that they could look into.
Yeah. Is that correct? Right, okay. Any other questions?
Just one procedural question. Is it all right to come back with material, or do we, how far in advance do we need that material? I'm just thinking of practical time.
Get it, get it to me at least a week before the meeting.
Okay, no problem.
And I.
This is going to be on the next meeting, or is there enough time to advertise on all that stuff? Is it, would it be one month?
The meetings are, the meetings are already advertised.
Oh. I'm talking about for them coming back.
Well, it'll be the next meeting.
There's no, there's no separate advertising for.
They'll be on, they'll be on the agenda in September.
Okay.
If they, if they get me the plans a week to 10 days before the meeting, that's plenty of time to repair your packets and get them to you.
Be advisable to try and get a meeting up with the, with the residents between now and then.
We had a question as to when that September meeting is.
I believe it's, I believe it's the fifth.
I just want to make clear that.
Tuesday?
We're not discussing the overall master plan, are we, and the relocation of the parking structure. We're just talking about what they intend to do to the parking structure at that location.
I think we're talking about both because.
Before we recommend approval of moving the garage closer to the neighbors, which varies from what we originally approved as the township approved it, the change, we're, we want to, we want a comfort level that that change is not a significant negative impact to residences because it is a change.
In other words, the change could occur if we like what they do with the parking garage, and the neighbors are happier with it. Did I sum that up correctly? Okay. All right, and I suppose we need a letter from you asking for the continuance? Maybe?
No, you should probably vote to table both of these plans.
Okay.
So I, I move that we table both of these applications pending a, revisiting them in September.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we are tabled until September?
Thank you very much.
All right, any old business? Anyone? You're all ignoring me. Okay, no old business. Any new business? I get no answers, we go move on, okay? Then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.